Quite the screen we got.
I'm glad I was, because if you're going like eight.
You get kind of a block view though. At least now you can kind of tell who's on teams versus having.
Most of them are preventable where it certainly stops. We understand it's fun, but. Across the road and stuff or. It's right here. We make sure that we talk in our remarks, it's right out, it's just right about there.
Good morning, John.
Yeah, how are you doing, sir?
I think good.
Ready to rumble?
Well, I hope it doesn't come to that. Yeah, I wouldn't wear it either.
So far. Sam's not here.
Rubik's Cube.
Have you ever done one?
Got the X-Back mechanic?
Mr. Workman, you been on your fat tire?
No.
Yeah, I haven't heard.
Been on a couple of times, yeah.
This is electric up and ready.
He's got two vets. You want to give him a call?
I'll give him a minute.
Okay.
I don't have to switch out the studs.
Yeah.
Never use those.
I never bought a stud.
Oh, I'm telling you.
Save your life.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
At least your chin.
For a Tuesday, make sure with the.
I tried Hancock Township last night.
Nothing boring going on there, huh?
Yeah, they've.
Okay. Because it didn't work.
Nope.
Don't have anything else to complete them.
Road projects are good when they're done.
Yeah. Here's the cheat sheet I put together.
So, I'll call.
There's a whole sequence of things to get to where you need to go. So now I can do it in less than five minutes.
Recipe.
There's a recipe. Formula, a recipe. Pardon?
I did. I still didn't have to write.
You did, yeah, you did. That's what you said.
I don't know, unlike him.
Oh, no, that's, happens all the time. Very common.
No answer, so let the show go on.
Okay. Everybody else is.
You had some traffic?
Counter for, so. When the light goes on, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll wait till Mr. Lynch takes his seat.
Why, we're gonna stand for the pledge.
Stand for you.
Okay. Okay. We'll call, we'll call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners on April 16th to order. Join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, welcome. We'll talk, we'll come to the time of the meeting where, uh, public comments. Anybody from the audience want to step forward and, uh, address the county board on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one, uh, we'll move along. Item number two, the agenda review and adoption.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Workman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch to approve the agenda. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of the April 2nd regular session.
Move to approve as presented, sir.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Fahy, there, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Community announcements. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just want to remind everyone that planting season has started, so please, uh, slow down and make room for all the various farm equipment. And just definitely be careful. Yesterday I had the opportunity to tour the menace, uh, excuse me, mosquito facility in Jordan and got to see that whole operation and they have guaranteed me that the mosquitoes and black fi- flies will be appearing once again this summer, so be prepared.
Wet and warm weather will bring them on in a hurry.
Yes. And then also want to make people aware of, uh, the Ridgeview Foundation is having a bowling event at Eden Prairie on April 19th. If you're interested, it's their annual pins for purpose event and they're benefiting the Ridgeview, uh, pediatric services. Uh, so you can purchase tickets or go to theridviewfoundation.org website for more information. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. Other community announcements? Commissioner Urdeman.
Mr. Chair, I get the opportunity through AMC to go to Home Run Leadership, your guide for better, faster team decisions tomorrow. I like to be transparent if I'm traveling outside of the district. And so I'll be there tomorrow. Um, I've heard good things about this guy, um, and so we'll see how the conference goes.
I have to admit, he is interesting. We had him at one of our AMC board meetings.
Yeah, good. Um, all firm what JP said about bowling. It'll be the second year we've done that one. We've done other things with, um, with Ridgeview. Um, it's one of the more approachable ones, the pins for purpose. Uh, it's not the, you know, you don't have to write huge checks. You can, it's, it's for young families or people that have been, um, are looking for an on-ramp. So it's a fun event, quick event, easy in and out. Uh, last week we had library. We're all liaisons to a number of boards, but I like to share, share back when we get a chance. They had their annual report. Jody put a lot of time into it, as did her staff. Um, and I had asked the question, I said, where are we at when it comes to like STEM stuff? And about 10% of our overall collection is STEM, uh, science, technology, engineering and math, which was kind of interesting. But if you look at the juvenile nonfiction titles, about 53% of our overall mix is STEM. And so I think that our, um, community is uniquely situated, that there's an interest in, in those STEM materials and other things. Uh, but other things that came as well, uh, we topped another million circulation this year. Uh, I think it was a million four, which is about what we have from park visits, if you look at that. Um, we're part of, uh, the number one Libby overdrive consortium in the world. Again, a second year. What, what does that mean? Uh, your digital checkout, so you can get them on Libby. Um, and, uh, and our, our MELSA consortium that buys and, and does different things, has more checkouts through that, that online app than anybody. Um, we had 5,500 new library cards last year, which is a huge number. Uh, part of that is attributed to one of the efforts that I've been happy about is I want every youth to have, uh, a, a library card in a partnership with a number of districts across the county, school districts, that is. Kids are getting a digital card, um, so we don't have to have the physical cost to it, but we can bring them into the joy of reading, um, and, uh, the team has done a nice job, Bob Lincoln and others, of outreach to a number of the smaller school districts. Now they're tackling the big one. About 60% of youth in Carver County go to District 112. And so that's a big one with technology and all the sensitivities and the team is navigating it. It's, uh, pretty fun. I'd be remiss in talking about libraries if I didn't talk about, uh, last week we had National Library Worker Day, um, and then a lot of the top titles, um, that are coming our way, um, from a books perspective, I've had a chance to engage with. Uh, a couple more things. May 30th, sorry, May 25th, I was asked to talk about this. Sometimes it's called the Murph Workout, um, but it's the Memorial Day Workout. I can post this on my social too. Um, but the Memorial Day Workout, people are getting together at 10 a.m. at Veterans Park in Chaska. The gal that's leading this is just, she's just fantastic and energetic and she's trying to bring people together for the purpose of the community. But sometimes Memorial Day sneaks up on us and it's barbecues and it's family time, but we forget sometimes what it's for, so this is one way to remember that. I know it's on our agenda today, uh, in a different way, but I want to recognize that after 160 years, the Chaska Herald will close at the end of the month. Chan Hassen Villager goes away, six, uh, papers as part of Southwest Media in the Southwest area will close. A lot of things going that, um, sometimes it comes unexpectedly, but it wasn't surprising. I see Al's in the audience now, the, uh, Waconia Patriot. I think, I think the last remaining, uh, local newspaper in our Carver, in Carver County. And what, what does that matter for taxpayers or people that are listening online? I think two things, the practical compliance issues, uh, that we have to post the things that we do. Um, and I think the second thing is, is as we evolve, there's a future of what does transparency look like for, um, our local community? How do they know what we're doing? So there's checks and balances. Um, and how do we have the best dollar for the, for the taxpayer? I know there's big media out there that wants to capitalize on some of those dollars. Uh, we also want to make sure that, that people have access to information. And it gets more and more challenging because it's more and more desperate. It used to be, um, you open up the Chaska Herald and you know where the dance is or the fundraiser or the whatever. And now you have to go to multiple social sites, you have to talk to multiple people. And so we are keeping an eye on that. And then finally, two more things. Had a chance to go to the Chaska Bash last week. It's for activities and athletics and, uh, the, um, community does a nice job of rallying around for that one-time fundraiser a year to support those. And then two weeks ago, I had a chance to be at Fix-It Clinic, which is a great partnership. I see Greg Bow in the audience. It's a great partnership that was started a number of years ago, um, with environmental services and, um, a better society where people can go, I think it's four times a year now, to take something that they think is broken, but they're not quite sure. I brought a mixer over and, uh, it was the old power on, power off. Uh, Murphy's Law must have jostled on the way over because they plugged it in and the darned thing worked. Uh, but there was, uh, every, I think every slot that was available was there from people that wanted to have help putting a button on a shirt, uh, people that had home, uh, appliances. And I don't know what the number is, but a lot of pounds of waste, um, are avoided by people fixing these things, not only for their own, own use, but putting it on Marketplace or getting it in the hands of other folks. So applaud those efforts, it's fun to see them play out. I know that there was a lot of work getting it to that point. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Other community announcements? Commissioner Lynch?
If I could, if I could, thank you. Um, sorry for getting here, uh, right at the start of the meeting. Normally I'm here about a half hour early. Excuse me again. But I was driving down the road, got several miles from home and then it's like, what are all these extra lights on for? So then I had to turn around and, and, uh, must be the season for it because I, uh, Commissioner Fahy had to, uh, drop off at the, uh, repair center last week. So anyway, we got that done. And Commissioner Urdeman touched, touched on it. You know, Chaska Herald closing after 160 years is really, really, really a big deal. 160 years, that's not a fly-by-night thing. That's 160 years, it's been a, since the founding of our, you know, our county. So, uh, again, I'd like to thank Al from the Waconia Patriot for still being here. It's, uh, it's wonderful to actually have that. Um, I was considering about, um, bowling for the, uh, Ridgeview, the pins for purpose. Is it okay if I have bumpers?
Would improve our score, that's for sure.
With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you. We've all heard of the Carver County Fair in Waconia. Have you ever wondered what it takes to, um, run a fair? Well, uh, there's a, let's say a workshop, uh, this Sunday, I thought this Sunday, the Sunday of May 5th, from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Carver County Fairgrounds. It's open to all ages and you can, uh, whether livestock, non-livestock, there will be demonstrations, FFA, 4-H representation, hands-on experiences. Uh, and actually you can get the feel of what it takes to run a fair, what it takes to be part of the fair. And there's actually a junior fair board. So if you're a younger person that wants to become involved in the fair, uh, May 5th, Sunday afternoon, 1:00 to 5:00. This is the time of the year, garden fever was last weekend. Time to get out and work in your garden and most gardeners have tools. And some of the tools we use a lot, some tools we hardly ever use, some tools we need and some tools we wish we had. Well, there's a garden tool swap, April 27th. That'd be next Monday, oops, I got the wrong month. But April 27th, 7th, uh, at the Chan Hassen Recreation Center. It's from 10:00 to noon. Uh, bring your used tools and hopefully you can swap it off for something else that you can probably use more than you're using that tool now. And the last thing I'd like to mention, on May 4th, that's a Saturday, Christmas in May. Chaska holds this, uh, basically they find some properties in the city of Chaska that need some help. It could be outside help with, um, your plants and shrubs or it could be working on the siding, painting, steps, could be interior work. Anyway, um, they start meeting at St. John's, uh, the church at about 7:30, have a breakfast and then they divide up into teams. So if you don't, if some people already have their team, uh, organized and then they're, like I say, they'll meet there and then go out to the project and work on the project. Uh, if you are not, not part of a team at this point, come and register and they will put you on a team. So it's a good project in the city of Chaska that improves the properties that people actually need help with. Any final community announcements? If not, we'll move on. Our agenda, number five, the consent agenda. This morning we have a number of things. The first one is a contract with our countywide seal coating. We have a right-of-way acquisition. We have professional service agreements. Uh, we have a liquor license for the Gusta Ballpark. We have a tobacco license for Schwamms, uh, Winery. We have a letter of support for a grant application. We have to approve the Waconia Patriot as our legal county newspaper. We have a PSA for engineering augmentation. Um, we have settlement, more settlements for right-of-way on Highway 40. We have another right-of-way agreement with Highway 212. Engineering on Highway 212, professional service agreements on Highway 41. And we have grant funding agreement for Highway 5. And finally, our Health and Human Services and Commissioner Warrens.
Mr. Chair, I move approval with dialogue.
We have a motion by Commissioner Urdeman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion on the consent?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if it's a proper venue or we can do it a different time, but I see Al's in that room. I'm curious, uh, maybe a, a couple of comments on 5 dot 7 as to what the future looks like for newspapers. And I'm not the expert, but man, when it came upon yet, I don't know, anyway, super surprised, but six papers going away with a swap of a pen in less than a month? That's just, it's a, it's a big colossal change and so I don't know if it makes sense to field some, some comments of what the state looks like now or maybe grab it in.
I think we'll probably do that at another time. Um, sometimes there's more going on behind the scenes than the actual, the headlines actually, uh, detail. So, but that's a good topic. Hey, what is the future? What's going on? And Administrator Hemzir, I'll look over to you that you can maybe put that in, uh, either a work session or a topic to bring before the board at a future date.
Will do, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Urdeman and others. Yeah, we'll need to follow up on this issue. I've heard at the legislature, there's discussion also about potential changes to the law because of what's going on. So there'll be more to come. In the meantime, uh, we have the Waconia Patriot. Fortunately, that, that can serve to meet our statutory obligations.
Any other comments on the, or discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item 6.1, Sexual Violence Center update. And this morning we have Ashley Taylor Gouche. Gouche, please come and join us. I knew I'd butcher it one way or another. You can either do the podium or the chair, whichever you feel more comfortable with. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. Um, good morning, everybody. My name is Ashley Taylor Gouge and I'm the Associate Director of the Sexual Violence Center. Um, SBC is a nonprofit rape crisis center providing free support services to individuals ages 12 and up who have experienced sexual violence. Our services include a 24-hour crisis line, individual counseling, support groups, medical advocacy's, legal advocacy and outreach and education. We opened in Minneapolis in 1985 and expanded services to Carver County soon after in 1987. Uh, we provide ad, medical advocacy services to hospitals, including 212 and Ridgeview Waconia. And we maintain relationships with many schools across the county in order to provide counseling services and support groups to our youth. Uh, we are grateful members to be members of this community and to provide these essential services to those who need them most. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and in your packet you should see that there is a proclamation acknowledging it as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And to honor survivors of sexual violence and to raise awareness of the impact of sexual violence across our communities, I ask you to please adopt this resolution. A proclamation, my apologies.
No, no problem. Questions for, uh, Ashley? Ashley, my, maybe you've mentioned it right off the bat and my mind was going someplace else. Where are you located? What's the easiest way for somebody to contact you?
Sure, so the best way to contact us is our crisis line, which is 612-871-5111.
Say it one more time. Thank you.
We have offices in Minneapolis and in Savage.
Other questions, comments for Ashley? Commissioner Urdeman?
Mr. Chair, a topic like this doesn't always come up and come into the boardroom, so thank you for being here and being an advocate in the space. In 1987, been around a long time. Um, I think that it also underscores a lot of the partnerships that most of the community doesn't know are happening. Um, do you guys partner with SVA, Southern Valley Alliance?
Occasionally. Um, we do a kind of, uh, complimentary work, whereas I believe they mostly work with individuals who have experienced domestic violence and we focus solely on sexual violence. So they overlap, but are also kind of their own lane, if that makes sense.
Yep, and I know that there's overlap too. As you walked in, you probably saw the blue pinwheels. That's a passion project for a number of people that are on our staff and in partnership. Um, can you talk about the funding sources? Where your funding sources come from and how many people you serve during the course of a year?
Sure, so we serve approximately, I would say around 1,500 individuals per year. Um, sparsing that out by county, I do not have that information right now. Um, we're working on that data as year end has finalized. We receive federal funding through the Victims of Crime Act and the Violence Against Women Act and we do also receive funding from Carver County.
Cool, thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I think the request is this morning to, uh, adopt the proclamation. Is there such a motion?
Move approval for that proclamation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Motion by Commissioner Urdeman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here. Good luck. I wish I could say, "We don't need you," but obviously the facts bear out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 6.2, the Arts Consortium of Carver County update. This morning we have Kathy Olefunt.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Can I advance the slides?
Yep.
There we go, all right. Well, thank you, members of the Carver County Board of Commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. I've met many of you at public events in the community and had the opportunity to speak with Commissioner Urdeman earlier in the year, so thank you for that. I represent the Arts Consortium of Carver County, or the ACCC. We are an organization that's dedicated to fostering and promoting arts within our community. We are now entering our 15th year and the mission of the ACC is to strengthen our community through the arts and cultivate the arts through the community. We are a registered nonprofit, 501(c)(3) and in the next few slides, I'd like to share our history of programming and services. Did you know that the ACCC organizes and funds three art festivals and fairs on an annual basis? The first is Art Stock, celebrating its 13th year. Art Stock is a two-day art and music festival held at the beautiful Parley Lake Winery. If you haven't been there, it's a, a wonderful event, bringing hundreds of people to Carver County. Art in the Park is a fairly new festival and we have great fun with that partnering with Chaska Parks and Recreation Department. It's held at Fireman's Park and the Chaska Event Center. We're in our fourth year. And here, visitors enjoy over 50 local art vendors. We have live music, free activities for families. And it's also the event where the ACCC releases its annual songwriter CD. And so that's part of our live music. And finally, also in its 13th year, the Big Woods Art Wander and is scheduled for this fall, September 27th through the 29th. It's a weekend self-guided tour where we have over 50 local artists that open their studios, provide demonstrations and sell their work. These festivals bring thousands to, uh, Carver County in celebration of the arts. The Arts Consortium also holds rotating gallery exhibitions and providing artists an opportunity to show their work in a public space, free of charge. We're fortunate to share this gallery space with the Chaska Community Center. It's just adjacent to the theater. And we have each year our gallery exhibition themes. These are our themes for the year 2023. Once the shows conclude and are taken down, they then travel to four participating Carver County libraries, enriching our public spaces. There we go. Don't know if there's a trick to advancing our slides, okay. Um, performances. We have, uh, very active music and literary groups that hold regular opportunities for artists to collaborate and share their work. We're look forward to our partnership with the Parley Lake Winery and the Summer Music Series. In addition, the ACCC creates a Songwriters of Carver County CD compilation on an annual basis and this year we are releasing volume nine. My, um, PowerPoint is skipping slides, I apologize.
Probably easier, just easier up and down arrows on the keyboard.
Oh.
Well, then it's not easier.
So much for new technology.
Way to go, Colin.
Is Colin here?
It is no wonder.
Okay, let me see.
It's intuitive.
At least it's working, the last.
It's on a clapper. He's got it on a clapper.
Performances.
Do it.
Well, it's, it's skipping some slides on me, but, um, I am gonna then highlight our gift shop. Colin, do you see the gift shop slide over there? It should be before this one. There it is. Oh, yeah, let's do classes in education. Doesn't look like that one's completely loading. While Colin's loading that, I will highlight our, uh, classes in education. Many of our ACCC members offer classes. These range from glass art, fiber art, drawing, painting, poetry and writing. We also love having a community presence at festivals and farmers markets where we often offer a free interactive art activity. And you can see that in the, the middle two, uh, folk pictures there. We also enjoy hosting area scout troops up at the community center, helping them earn their art experience badge. Okay. Colin, can you find the one that's the gift shop perhaps? There we go. And I guess my photos aren't loading, but finally there is our ACCC gift shop. This serves as a space for local artisans to show and sell their creations and we're extremely grateful to the Chaska Community Center for their generous support in providing us this space to lease. Having a dedicated space like this is so important for the ACCC as it provides us with a home base and a tangible presence in the community.
Where in the community center would I find it?
So as you enter the community center, the main door, we're right away, um, straight ahead and it's in the area that used to be a cafe in the community center. A lot of people don't know to find us there, but we get a lot of foot traffic and it's, it's a very fun place to be.
That's why I wanted you to point it out.
Yes. So funding sources for the Arts Consortium. Our funding sources come from four major areas. Membership dues, local business leaders, donations and sponsorships. Our funding sources come from four major areas: membership dues, local business leaders, donations and sponsorships, and grants. And our current reality. Following an examination of our twenty-three expense report, the Board of Directors has concluded that our grant funding opportunities have shifted, and it's increasing our reliance on membership, sponsors, and donations as a nonprofit. The gift shop expenses, which include our lease, insurance, and utilities, exceed our revenue, which results in a significant loss for the consortium. And we have concluded that without additional funding, our three-year lease agreement for the gift shop, under our current terms and conditions, is unsustainable for our organization. So now, exploring some solutions. So, since I joined the consortium in June of twenty-three, we have taken some proactive steps to address these challenges. We've held a membership drive and gained thirty-three members since June of twenty-three. We've increased our membership dues. We've had some fundraising campaigns, including, of course, Giving Tuesday and individual donor solicitation. And then, since I've come on board in June, I've applied for four arts and culture grants. Two of them have been denied, two of them are pending. And further exploring solutions is what brings me here. So continuing to subsidize the gift shop under the current terms and conditions is unsustainable for our organization, which is why I'm here to make a public funding request framed as an annual subsidy ranging from six to seven thousand dollars. This subsidy would directly contribute to the sustainability of our organization, enabling us to maintain the gift shop and gallery space at the community center and continue to serve the community. I also wish to express a willingness to collaborate with the county on future initiatives and projects that align with our shared goals. Thank you so much for the invitation to present and for considering our request for public funding. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, the rest of the board is thinking. I'll ask the first question. How big is your board? And how can a person become involved, active, and get on your board? Sounds like you've been only on there a short time, and you're already a spokesman, so that's, congratulations.
Yeah, it's been great fun. My background is actually public education, as you know, and so this has been a very fun, very fun thing for me to get into following retirement. After thirty-six years in public education, I feel right at home here in the boardroom.
What school district? Do you want to throw that out there?
Yeah, I'll put a plug in for Waconia Public Schools. I was there for thirty-four years. The Arts Consortium is a wonderful organization, all volunteer-run. We do have two contracted positions, my position as well as our bookkeeper. We have currently nine serving on our Board of Directors. We have some very dedicated leaders in the organization. We have genre liaisons and folks that do just a lot of volunteer work for the consortium and have been active for many years. So we're also always welcoming new members, and we do have a website. If you go to the ArtsofCarverCounty.org, you'll find us there.
So this is a shameless plug. If anybody's interested on this, get in contact with Kathy or...
Yes, so go to our website and you can find a way to contact us. And I also thank Al Loman here. He had a wonderful article about the Arts Consortium about a month ago in The Scene Magazine. It's very nice.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Urdeman.
It's a fifteen-year organization, and it's not an easy path for anybody in this space. And I think that you face the same things that a lot of people across the country do, is creative folks aren't typically the greatest at fundraising or bookkeeping or all the things that have to be part of a not-for-profit. And I think a lot of times, we forget that investment in the arts or culture is an investment in a vibrant community. And so applaud the efforts, but the practical reality is that there's gaps. It's always food to mouth, there's not enough runway. And so instead of chasing big dreams and vision and creative stuff, you get stuck in the muck of how do we make the bills at the end of the month? Totally recognize that.
Yep.
Also, you know, a sustainable path is a path that revenues exceeds costs. And you're being prudent to trim that stuff down and all those other things. I just point to an area the board did a great job, I think, from a sustainability standpoint. We had the opportunity with the Andrew Peterson Farm to take a bold step in the right direction, to say, "You know what? We're not gonna, we don't need you to come every month to ask for money. We need to solidify it." And they're on a path to generate adequate income to cover their organization, not just in a year or two, but for perpetuity with a venue. I like the thought of dreaming big, because that has to be part of the sustainability factor, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about what that means for our community. And one of the things that pops up is Red Rocks Amphitheater in Colorado. And just to paint a vision of what can happen and what is big and what they've done, and it's been many, 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 many years, but they generate a hundred and eighty-six million dollars of revenue from Red Rocks Amphitheater. Hundred and eighty-six million. Most of those dollars stay local through the form of who they hire or whatnot, but the focus is on arts and cultural programs. That was the thrust of it, not just to have it there, but to take those dollars and reinvest in the community. And so I don't want the here and now to lose the thought of a big vision in the future. And then the last thing is what can be a path to self-sustaining. I was on the Parks and Rec Board, which also includes arts for Chaska, when the contract was negotiated and you guys took possession of that space. And I know that there was a lot of questions and there was a lot of answers, but it seems like, two, three, however many years later, it's not generating enough revenue from those operations to cover it. And so I guess I put it out, is what are those areas where you can generate significant revenues that plugs you for today, but also paves the way for a future that you can dream about? What could arts be? Because I think that as our aging population in Carver County ages faster, largely tied to the fact that we are the most expensive place to live. We're pinching off those young families from coming here. So the percentage of youth and young families that are coming here are shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. And when the ones that are coming here that we can grow it, arts is right in the data set as to what they're looking for. So I'm curious, short-term, midterm, where those opportunities for vision and revenue and self-sustaining could come from? If you have any thoughts?
Right. Well, and I'm working on those challenges with our board right now. We are working from an arts direction plan, our strategic plan, and working on those fundraising opportunities. We have some thoughts on some music events this summer that could be revenue generating. Our festival season does bring in some revenue as well. And so we're looking at all of those things very carefully. Right now, the consortium subsidizes the gift shop about sixty-five hundred a year to keep it open. And so, you know, we want to be fair about giving our artists their fair commission fees. And beyond that, then the rent, utilities, and insurance do, you know, cost us a fair amount. So we're in that space as a board of talking about some of those solutions.
Yep, two thoughts and then I'll be done. One is the creative class is disproportionately impacted by mental health and others. And I want to say that again. The creative class is disproportionately impacted by mental health and other areas, because you create this thing and you spend so much time, energy on it, and then you unveil it to the world, and the world's harsh and says, "I don't like what you created," or "I do like what you created." And so I think there's an opportunity for partnership in that space. I think there's a number of increasingly plentiful areas for opportunity when partnering with mental health in the arts space. And then I also think the Andrew Peterson Farm is a great venue to look to partner with, that they have a venue that plays into that space of arts and culture. So applaud what you're doing, I'm here to support you. These are tough times. And then the last thing I'll say is, it's come up over and over and over again in the last year. There's an estimated a hundred million dollars of philanthropic dollars that leave Carver County every single year. Say it again, a hundred million dollars of philanthropic activity where people, if given a great reason, might choose to invest here. If there was a big ask, might choose to invest here, but they take those dollars and they invest in places outside of our community. So huge opportunity in the philanthropic space where people in the arts to connect with this. And I know that there is some philanthropic dollars to be had there, so again, count me in to help support you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Urdeman.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Fay.
Mr. Chair, Kathy, when does the three-year lease expire?
We, the three-year lease did expire in December thirty-first of this year. And I've been working with Marshall Grange on that renewal. And so he and I are working together, and he's very aware of the situation. I've been very transparent, and we've had some good meetings together.
And you had meant in 2023 it expired?
It did, yes. So we are up for a three-year lease renewal.
Okay, and then are you also approaching the city of Chaska for this similar type of request?
I have not yet. I did invite the mayor to a meeting with Marshall Grange, and that didn't work out. So Marshall and I did meet together, and the mayor is aware of our situation as well.
Yeah, I definitely am a big proponent. I've been to Art Stock multiple years in a row now with my wife and I, and we continue to buy the unique items that you can find and that displayed by those talented people and the type of products. It's amazing. Yeah, I think the opportunity is probably out there to continue with your fundraising events and probably connect with someone locally to help bridge that gap. And Commissioner Urdeman made a lot of great points, and I think the opportunity is there within Carver County.
Other thoughts, comments? Not, thank you for sharing that with us. Good luck.
Thank you.
And we'll probably see you down the road.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, item six point three, the approval of amendments associated with connect-up Carver County expansion. I didn't see you, Mr. Lees. I was looking for you.
It's hard to see me, I know.
I know, you blend right in. Thank you. Welcome, Randy.
Morning.
Randy's our Carver Link Fiber Manager.
Right. Mr. Chair, commissioners, again, for the public, I'm Randy Lees. I'm a county employee. I'm the manager for the Carver Link Fiber Network, which is the county's public fiber optics network that we have in Carver County that we went live with in 2013, and we've been expanding ever since. I want to first throw out a slide that we've seen a number of times before. Talks about Carver Link's purpose. The main purpose for Carver Link, the reason we initially were put together, was to actually be able to make connectivity available from whatever aspect. And we ended up on fiber to be able to connect up our county facilities, which includes all of our public structures that we have, including our libraries, our eight-hundred megahertz towers, our traffic locations, the government centers, things like that. We've got three secondary purposes. There are no order of importance here, so none is one better than the other. One of the first secondary purposes that we have is to actually connect up our public and community support entities. So what that means is that we're actually out working with our fiber optics network to connect up all of our schools, all of our public schools. We're connecting up our transit authority. We work to connect up all of our cities and city locations that we have. So we've got connectivity in all eleven of our cities. And then we've also, via the partnerships that we have, based upon the grant funding that helped to initially fund us and the program that we had put together, we actually partner up with Ridgeview Medical and Crown College, and they're a big part of our scenario as well as from our network. The second, a secondary, second purpose that we have is to actually have an infrastructure that we can actually use regionally to be able to provide some collaboration opportunities throughout the county. So we actually worked with a number of collaboration partners from a fiber optics perspective. A lot of our sister counties around us, from Scott County, Hennepin County, Sibley, kind of towns like that, Listor County, and then the state of Minnesota, and then some cities throughout as well, that we actually partner with and actually utilize our public infrastructure to work with their public infrastructure for the benefit of us all. The last purpose that we, secondary purpose that we have is the one that we're primarily here to talk about today, which is the, what we call a middle mile network, which basically I like to talk about fiber optics in the terms of road system. A lot of us have driven on a road at some point in time in our life, I would imagine. And so with that, we've come out here and from a road.
That's why he's the manager, he knows all this stuff.
Let's talk roads. So from a road perspective, we talk about middle mile, which is like highways. So basically, the highway, the county road, things like that. And then we have things that are what they call last mile, which associate to the driveway into the house, basically. And so what we do is we actually have built a network that is what they call the highway system out here, the middle mile network, that allows us to then bring in some private side partners to come in and then provide services to the businesses and residents of Carver County. So that's what we're here to talk about today more so. So before we dive into those, I want to actually talk a little bit about what we do outside of that. So we've got a lot of activity that we're doing out in the public space, but just from an operational aspect, since we've met here, and the last time I was in front of the commission was in December. So we've had a lot of activity since that time. I just want to call out a couple of the items that we've been doing since then, outside of some of our other efforts for the residents, the businesses. We actually are keeping our self-operational. That's a big component of us, just to manage the existing nine-hundred-mile network that we have right now and the connectivity that we have for our roughly two-hundred-and-sixty currently connected locations right now. During this last six months, we've actually executed an agreement with Hennepin County for some very strategic fiber resources that they've got within Carver County to get us down to Minneapolis for something that we're doing for some connectivity there. We executed a five-year agreement with Ridgeview Medical to actually provide connectivity to all seventeen of their locations throughout southern Minnesota. So we've got that in play that'll keep us in motion for five years with them. We've got a six-year agreement that we executed with our, and we talked a little bit about it for Waconia and Kathy and some of the stuff here, with our seven public school districts. So we helped them, a number of years back, band together as a consortium that they call the Carver County Schools Network, and we've worked with that consortium over the years. And they've recently come to us and said, "We are, we're in dire need of some additional capacity and bandwidth." So they've actually, we've inked a deal for a six-year deal to increase the capacity to them by over a hundred and fifty percent. So we're having to re-architect some of our network to be able to provide that connectivity to them. We executed a deal with, through the Carver County School Networks for a, the last of what we have that we've been trying to accomplish for the last ten years, is to get to all of the Carver County public schools, no matter where they may be, for all of our seven districts. And by the end of next week, we'll have the last one of those connected, which will have fiber over to the Southwest Metro Dean Lakes Ed Center, which is located in Shakopee, and that will complete our efforts until any new schools come on board. And with that, we'll have over forty, forty schools, public schools, from our seven districts connected with the Carver Link network. So we've got that. And then we actually just finished up a collaboration with Scott County for thirty-five miles of shared fiber that we've got in their network, and we've shared some in ours. And that fiber that we have in their network will allow us to leverage some significant cost savings on our side, and then it'll actually help us to put in some best-use practices for the fiber that we have. So that's a little bit about what we've got going on there, outside of what additional that we're here to talk about too. And we've had to kind of reclassify our verbiage here and rephrase it since December. We were on pace and trying to, and the efforts that we were trying to do has become the first county in the state of Minnesota to have a hundred percent broadband connectivity countywide. We found out at a conference in December that we can no longer make that claim. There are four smaller counties that are up north that have a lot of tribal land in them, that they are actually completed, their counties are under seven, six, four thousand individuals. And so they've actually been able to, by December, to make that claim now. So we've refashioned our statement to say that we're looking to be the first county in the state of Minnesota with the population over ten thousand, and the first Twin Cities metro county. So that's the effort that we're working on right now. With that, the board actually approved in 2022 the Connect Up Carver Initiative, which we've been working on, what we'll talk about here in a little bit. And along with that effort to try to get us to that hundred percent availability, we've got several handshake agreements, understandings that we've got with the primary partner in our network, which is Metronet. We've got an elimination of a two-hundred-foot driveway limit. There were some of the locations where service providers as a whole, they only have so much space to be able to work up to a location, and before they would actually charge the residents for that price, we've been able to get Metronet to actually demo for the first time in their nineteen states that they do business in, a two-hundred-foot driveway limit elimination. So they actually will actually build up, if you have a mile-long driveway, they'll build up to your house as part of our package without any additional fees. We've got some things where we've got some, we're actually helping to contribute some costs to specific areas in the county where they're building out into from some of our rural areas. But we didn't help them contribute costs for some of the areas across the street, because that just wasn't part of, we had to draw the line somewhere, and so across the road. But we helped to identify with Metronet via our mapping solutions that we have in place to go, "Hey, it makes sense for you to get the guy across the road too." So we've been able to get some programs in place for that. And then we've also helped to negotiate between Metronet and the various cities throughout for some things that we call city fiber agreements, which are a several-page document that we created that actually is between Metronet and the cities, that helps the city get infrastructure fiber-wise out to some very specific locations in their city. that help them, helps the city get infrastructure fiber-wise out to some very specific locations in their city that they desire to. And it actually asks the city in turn, they will come in and they'll waive the, the construction permit fees. So we've been able to help facilitate those to, to foster this. So let's talk about Connect Up Carver real quickly. So we've had this in front of the board a number of times. So what is Connect Up Carver? Connect Up Carver is our 10 and a half million dollar initiative that the county's contributed 6 and 1/2 million dollars toward in, in August of 2022. It builds out 360 miles of primarily rural fiber. And we began in September of '22, that's that construction, and it builds out to roughly 2,200 rural locations. And that's to all of our businesses and residents primarily out in the rural western part of the state. It provides availability of no less than 100 meg internet speed at what they call symmetrical, which means it's the same up and download speed, so we don't play that game with fiber. That's a lower speed than we have. The, the partner that we work with for this is Metronet. They offer gig speed. So we're well above that, that 100 meg line. And then it actually continues on the private, public-private collaboration that we've had from our existing Carver Link network in this Connect Up Carver project where the county actually owns the network and then we're bringing along a private service provider to come out there and provide service to business and residents. The, the dark blue areas on the map, and you're going to see some various amount of maps from me here as I'm up here today, is that the dark blue areas are the Connect Up Carver Initiative that you approved back in, in 2022. And let's talk a little bit about the progress that we're at right now. So right now, we're actually, need to update the slide. As of yesterday, we're at 98.2% complete with our construction. So we're almost finished with construction. The, the remaining amounts are left, are going to be carried over for a couple of years based upon the fact that there's some stuff that Linden's got going on on Highway 212 that we can't go into. So we've got to wait for that to get done before we can run down that same spot, not just rip out.
Linden always gets his fingers.
Always in the way. So we're, we're, when we get done with fiber construction, there's a thing that Metronet has, it's called make ready. And so what they do is as soon as the fiber construction is complete, then they make it ready so that they can actually go out and provide service. So they're at, right now roughly of the 98% that we've got fiber built for, they're 95% of the way complete to make service available. So 95% of the 360 miles that we put in the ground is ready for somebody to say, I want service, Metronet could turn them on. So we've got that in play. One of the things that we've got contractually in our agreement with Metronet for this project, the Connect Up Carver, is that they had to physically go out and knock on doors. So we wanted to make sure that they hit everybody out there. They're 50% of the way through that. And right now, we figure within the next 30 days, they'll be close to that 90% mark with that because they can knock out quite, they could physically knock out that fairly quickly. So, and then the last thing is, is we're getting GPS locations very specifically of our lines that we've got in the ground. And so they're about 25% of the way through that. We're assisting with that effort. So we look to have about another 100 miles a month, so we ought to be done by relatively 4th of July with that effort. We have a December 31st to 24 deadline for this project, pay it out and complete it up. And so that's our Connect Up Carver effort. So now, how do we get to 100%? Because if you remember the map back here, that's not 100% right now. Okay? So how do we get to 100%? Well, what we did, and I can't emphasize this enough from the support that you give to the IT department here at Carver County and specifically to the GIS department and to the individuals that work that. From the CIO to the managers, to the individual staff that are working type of that stuff. The, the things that I do, I wouldn't be able to do if I didn't have the support of the data that they give me. So I, right now, we are bar none from the, the Twin Cities metro. We have the best data sources that are possible. And because of that, I can go into the negotiations that I do with the Metronets, with the RBIGs, with the Comcast in the world and throughout some of the, our sister counties when we do our collaborations because we have the data. And we're known actually so much because of our data that actually counties, other counties will call us and ask us what they have. So what we did is we took the county as a whole and said, we've got a blank slate. So how can we fill this up with, with connectivity for everybody? So we've got a blank Carver County right now. We're going to fill in the swamps and lakes that we've got as we work our way through it. And then we've got all of our existing lines that we've had and we've constructed over the last 10 years prior to the Connect Up Carver project from 2022. So everybody that lives inside of these blue areas would have connectivity prior to 2022 if they wanted it. And then we add in our city locations. So in Carver Link, what we do, whenever we build anything and it's a differentiation, we have rural and we have the urban. So we've got the urban, which anything is, is, that's in a city limit. So those are separated out. They have different build mentalities and methodologies for what we do. So from a rural perspective, we've got the last slide that covers that. Now we're into the cities and we're taking out the cities as far as showing that they've got service. So these are all the locations that are currently constructed or have fiber already or are under agreement with us in some fashion or some kind of an understanding that they're going to bring fiber to them via Metronet. And so that takes care of those. And then we come up to our Connect Up Carver buildout that we add on top of that, and then it leaves these gaps left. And I know Commissioner Lynch, you're looking for your house up there in the upper-left corner. I know that.
Pretty white up there.
And that takes us to 100%. And how do we get to that 100%? Well, it's real simple. It's something that we call the kooky. So when we get done with this, we're going to go kooky here in Carver County for fiber. So what does that mean? It is a $14.3 million rural urban fiber build that is leveraging the board's approved $2.5 million that you guys gave us in December. So for the last four months, we've been negotiating heavily with Metronet as far as doing some of the stuff that we're trying to accomplish here to get the 100% fiber coverage. What this here project will do, again, it's called the Connect Up Carver Expansion. It builds 80 miles of rural fiber that will help us to fill the gaps that are out here that everybody's looking at in the rural areas. I'll give you a moment to look again.
A minute.
And what that'll do is it'll build the 80 miles in the rural areas and it will get to the last, what we've identified the last 400 locations in the rural spots. And so, but what we've got right now is, on, what the county has done is not looked at individual locations. And we've said, you've got to get to a specific area. And so anybody that's in that area, you've got to service them. So that way we're not down to a specific location to say, well, you missed it or you didn't, and we didn't pay you for that. So it's a, you've got to get an area and whoever's in that area that wants it, you've got to make it available. So this has got a December 31st of 2024 timeline on that particular item. And so by the end of this year, we should have everybody in the rural areas available with fiber if they want it and they could call up Metronet and actually get connected.
What was that date?
December 31st of '24. I could write that down. Okay, so then we've also been able to, and if you take a look back at what we've got, there are some huge gaps over on the eastern side of the county.
Thank you, thank you. I was wondering when you were going to get, we can talk about the rural, which I'm always forward, but that's a big white spot there.
We're here. So we've got some, we've got a large gap over in Victoria and Chan Hassen. Those have been some very difficult areas for us to try to help to facilitate some activity in. They are extremely costly, way more so than even some of the sister cities around Carver County because of the nature of the lakes and the roads that are through there. So they, basically the industry identifies things as a cost per pass, which means how much does it cost to build that individual location? There's 100 of them. They cost this much for each. Let's do the math and do the ROI on things like that. So Victoria and Chan Hassen have not been very ripe for the pickings from anybody's perspective. Thus the reason there are, are under other ISPs or service providers and they're providing service right now, more than what they have. So we've been able to parlay this 2.5 million that the board provided us in, in December and negotiate with Metronet to come in again for this $14.3 million project, which primarily is helping us to do the rural. And there's a little bit money left in there that actually we're throwing into the pot to say, go out and get Victoria and Chan Hassen. And Metronet has agreed and the agreements that we have in front of you that we're looking for some stuff on today will actually put that in place. So they would actually build out fully the towns of, of Chan Hassen and Victoria.
By what date?
We'll talk about that. Okay, so we've got that in play. So that'll take care of Victoria and Chan Hassen. And then again, with that, we should be at this mark right here. Now, there's some caveats that I want to call out and, and put my little quotes up for that. So based upon the Connect Up Carver Expansion and the agreements that we have contractually and also the understandings that we have with Metronet and other providers, that should get us to our 100%. So right now, the rural would be done by December 31st of 2024. So if people are asking, I can't emphasize that enough. If you get beyond December 31st of 2024 from a residence or a business standpoint and you desire high-speed connectivity, contact Metronet to get connected. If they tell you they can't connect you, contact myself here at the county and we'll make sure that you get turned on because you've got it available to you. And you will have it available to you by the end of this year. From the city perspective, the city builds that we do for Victoria and Chan Hassen, those are several-year builds. So it takes a couple of years to build out for those types of cities. It's usually a two or three-year build to get going. We've got a jump start, ready to go for Chan Hassen, so we're looking to actually get started with Metronet for those builds here this year. But it'll still take a year, year and a half at best for what we've got. Soon as they're done with Chan Hassen, they're going to move over to Victoria. Okay? Now, some of the stuff that we've got in there that we've been able to help again facilitate with that to help to, to get those builds through is we've been directly involved with each of those cities and then Metronet. So we've actually been sitting at the table, playing referee between the two of them and bringing the, bringing the two parties together in our city fiber agreements. So we've got that in play. Now, one of the things that you can see on the last slide is that it says 2027. And some of that has to do with the fact that if you do, there's a lot of timelines inside of here. So rural is by the end of December '24. We've got Victoria and Chan Hassen. We're still finalizing the dates on for that. But we know, we know from a timing build perspective, it takes a year and a half to two years to get those in play. So right now, we're looking at basically '24, '25. It could be into '26 depending on the weather situation. So we have those for their cities. And then lastly, I want to put the caveat out there is that of all the cities that we have and every, and of our 11 cities, there's one city that we do not have anything contractual with or we don't have a physical, just a handshake understanding with Metronet, and that is for the city of Chaska. So the city of Chaska is identified by Metronet that they've said that they're going to, they're going to build out the city of Chaska. But right now, their plans for Chaska are '25, '26, '27. And right now, we don't have anything in play that would actually require them to actually build that city out. So just be aware of that, that right now, Metronet has said they're doing that, but we've seen a number of providers. Frontier has pulled out of some stuff in Carver County. Comcast has pulled out of some stuff in Carver County. CenturyLink Lumen has pulled out of stuff in Carver County before where they've said, we're going to go here, there and everywhere. So we've got a number of providers and as the economics and the interest rates and the inflationary aspect of things go, it is actually definitely impacts the, the, the business models that were out there. So make sure you keep that in your head for what you've got. So.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a related question?
Minister Hamji.
So those eastern cities.
Yes.
They have current providers. They're maybe not Metronet, but there are current providers, right? So it's not like they don't have other options, correct?
That is correct. So there, there, there is no location in Carver County, period. It doesn't have some type of an option. It's whether or not it's the option that you, as the businesses or resident, may want from a speed perspective. So there are.
Don't they claim otherwise?
Yes.
Not every location has the high-speed internet.
There you go. That would be it. So it'd be, and it, and the high-speed internet is based upon the, the numbers that we pull from the state and from the fed levels. And then actually from what we, from the county's perspective are trying to do because it's fiber and we're trying to get to that one gig limit if we can. But our, our, our standing line is the 100 meg line, but we desire to be above that.
So do we know, if I could follow up?
Please.
Of those eastern cities, what percent don't have high-speed internet? And the maps are a little deceiving, I think.
Absolutely. And, and right now, in, in the discussions, and we can get further into that as far as pulling out some, some documentation for that. But the, in the discussions with the cities themselves, as far as what they have for, for writers in there and what they're trying to bring, Chan Hassen as a whole right now is, is negotiating some things. And they are underneath the, as the fed defines it based upon feds, the feds have a broadband map that we can look at. They are primarily, from meeting that 100 meg perspective, are in the 70 to 80%, what they call underserved. Victoria is even more so. So a lot of those areas don't meet some of that, that threshold. They're, they're down at the, the old federal level, which is 25 meg speeds. And, and, and everybody in those two communities, or I shouldn't say everybody, the majority of people in Victoria and Chan Hassen have that type of service available. But I know that, that from the governor's level, they're trying to get us to the 100 meg point as well.
That's the most, if I get calls, that's the most conversation I'm having is, why can't we get high-speed in my area? And these certain areas are willing to pay for it. Just get it in here.
Get it in here.
Yesterday, but no, it's not happening. And I appreciate, like you say, you're serving as a referee between these entities and nobody likes referees. So thanks for doing what you're doing.
Sure. And so what we're here today to do is ask for a motion to approve the Connect Up Carver Expansion agreements. And what those are is those, they are amendments to our existing 2022 Connect Up Carver project. Because all we're doing is we're actually adding some additional miles to that already successful project. And those, those contracts right now are finalizing negotiations and are sitting in pending attorney and risk review. So we would ask for that motion to approve that, once we get them finished.
Before we ask for the motion, any questions for Mr. Lees? Commissioner Workman.
Well, I'm hoping Mr. Lynch doesn't get the high-speed internet. He's a meme maker and I think the world is better if we don't have a lot of memes coming out of Northwestern Carver County. So if you could delay that. Where, um, what, what, two things. One, in the last year, seems like something happened on the east end. All of a sudden Verizon and I needed a new phone, so AT&amp;T was all over me to go with AT&amp;T, but Verizon was going door-to-door. What changed over there? I know Metronet kind of backed, backed away and it just seems like something opened.
We used to say there was something in the water out in the western end of the county and maybe now we kind of want that, whatever's in there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, it, right now, from what, what we see, and I, and I'm not the expert to the, the service providers out there, but what we've seen is that we're, I, I talk about it and it's like the gold rush. I mean, we're, right now, people are in a fairly massive land grab because it's whoever gets there first. So most providers realize that fiber optics is the way. You've got Verizon out there and, and we, we here in the Midwest know Verizon as a, as a cell provider for what we do, but they're actually the largest fiber company in the United States and they pretty much own the eastern seaboard. So they've got Verizon FiOS, which is fiber optics out there that they actually do what the, the Carver Link, this Metronet's, the, the CenturyLink Lumens do with fiber. What we've seen is that they're seeing that whoever gets there first from a fiber optics perspective is going to be the one that wins because somebody else doesn't usually want to come in and be the second provider against the fiber provider because you don't have a lot to offer.
Well.
Commissioner Workman.
Okay, so I don't know where the fiber comes in, so if I would have, would have, okay. So I've got a, it'll never go up, 60 bucks CenturyLink. And I was complaining about them, but I think it's my old Mac, so I'm going to throw that in the river. And I've got a new one and it seems like, wow, good performance. It's, it's coming down my street with CenturyLink. And it's coming into my house and it's coming out of the wifi. What would AT&amp;T do different?
Uh, right now, AT&amp;T wouldn't do, well, and, and some of that's going to depend on the, the infrastructure that's in play. So we get those types of calls regularly about the fact that fiber's down my street. Why can't I hook up or why can't somebody do something to that? And I take it back to the road system again and not everything is a, not everything's an interstate and everything's not a highway. But we won't go to Highway 212 and put a driveway off of every single spot on Highway 212. So when it comes to the fiber that would run down the road, it depends on how they've architected it. And then some of where the backend of it is, how they would actually technologically provide it out to the house. So what would somebody else, what would a different provider do differently? Some of the existing providers are been reluctant to actually expend additional dollars on what they originally built because they're still paying off the ROI on that. So to come in and say, well, I need to come in and, and add more to that right now to compete with somebody new that might come in. So they're, we're finding that they aren't willing to do that until they're actually pushed to do it. And so that's where you get your competition coming in there. But that's where somebody else would come in and go, well, you know what, you're offering whatever speed you are. I, I myself individually, I live in Woodbury and right now I have a Comcast line. If I stand on my roof, I can see the state Capitol. And for me, the best speeds I can pull five minutes from the state Capitol from where I'm at. And I live right off of I-94, right at 3M corporate headquarters. The best I can do is I can get Comcast and the best speed I can get up speed is 10 meg. That's the best I can do. And I've, I've fought that for years. So you get something like that and they've got fiber that runs down my road. So you get something like that and they've got fiber that runs down my road, but it's just the architecture that they've got right now in place that doesn't allow them to up it. They'd have to actually upgrade the whole street for some stuff, not from the fiber perspective, the physical boxes along the way that they'd have to pay for.
We should have you move to Carver County, Bob, but, um, last question. So you talk about the school districts. Uh, there's a lot of kids in this county who don't go to school at a public school district. So where's Southwest Christian and Holy Family and, and all the elementary schools? Is the Colonna Academy, uh?
That's a public.
It's a public school. Um, where, where are those places at?
So right now, one of the things that we had, um, handshake agreement wise, when we got together with Jaguar back in 2009, 2010, and we were designing the original Carver link network that we put together. And it was the fact that we're, we're going to play the public side and, and you provider, and that was actually some of the stuff that came out of the grant, the, the RA grant that we got from the feds that helped us to fund some of the original build. And part of that was that it was a public private collaboration. So when we, uh, architected that up and, and we're putting that together, we identified the fact that we were going to have a separation. We were going to have a public side and a private side and we've continued to maintain that. And we've gone to, at that time, we had gone to, to Jaguar and said, hey, uh, we're going to build this network. You're along with us because you, you won the bid to do this with us back in 2011. And these, these, uh, parochial schools, you're going to get to them because we're going to take care of the ed side of, of Carver County. And so, but we want to take care of the public. So you need to get to the, you need to get to the parochials. And so they have done that. So like the, the holy families and stuff like that. And there's, I forget what the name of the ones out in Hamburg that's out there, but, but Metronet is now from Jaguar, they're in all the parochials.
Mayor Lutheran.
That's, yeah, Mayor. That's why we had our kickoff out at Zion and Benton.
Yes.
Parochial schools.
Absolutely.
Other questions for Randy? Commissioner Lynch?
It was really great to hear you, that you brought up the, uh, school districts and there's seven school districts and that, um, now there's 40 schools that are all hooked up too, because we faced a fair amount of criticism way back when we, substantial amount of money to actually to, to do this. But when you hooked up the seven school districts, we expanded their bandwidth by quite a bit, if I remember. And now we're expanding it again, just let everyone know how necessary that we rely on, um, uh, fiber optic. Do you have those numbers off the top of your head, what they had and that we offered them and now they want to expand again?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lynch, uh, what we've got right now is that, that they had, they had subscribed to us for the last number of years for, it's, it's 10 gig of bandwidth. And so now, now they're at 25 gig. And then in turn, and we talked about it here today already, the, the, the 60% I think of the kids, uh, go to District 112, which is the Chaska Chan School District. We're actually going to be peeling, we have a, we have a unified network for all the school districts that they play in. District 112 has gotten so big and we've gone to them, actually the, our, my teams are going out next week to put some of that in play. Uh, and we've actually worked with the district and said, you're big enough right now, we're going to pull you off on your own. So we're actually building them their own little mini substructure within our network so that they can actually operate on their own because they're so big. So we're going to take the couple of the biggies and pull them out and then the rest of them can play over in the pool that they're in right now. So it's been, it's been very successful. The nice thing for us is that we've got, unlike a lot of other, uh, counties and entities that are out there, because we are fiber rich and we have a lot of fiber in the ground, it gives us a lot of opportunity to be able to do some of that type of stuff. And a lot of times when I'm out talking to our partners, our cities, our schools and stuff like that, I always relate it to the fact that we're all family. So when we're in there, I'm sitting at a table with my sister or my brother. And so when they're sitting there, it's not where you're having to ask.
Sometimes that's not always a good thing though.
Well, I've, I've got one of those brothers myself. We won't mention his name, but, um, but yes, absolutely. Uh, it's one of those where we come into those scenarios and say, hey, what, you know, what do you need? Cause we're looking at you too, to figure out what it is. So as, as new people come and play for some of the different organizations, a lot of the cities and stuff like that, I'll get a new administrator and they're like, they'll come in and go, you know, what, what is the relationship or it's like, well, we've been looking out for you for the last 15 years. So, so you, you know that when you come into the table with us, that's what we've been doing.
What, um, what is the take rate now? Okay, I remember you said the take rate was, uh, quite a bit was high with, is it still maintained, uh?
It has been, absolutely. One of the things that, that's some of the discussion that we had with, with Metronet in doing the Victoria and the Chan Hassen. It's actually a package thing. It doesn't have anything to do with it. We, they, when we were just discussing, and that's where I go back to our GIS, our, our, our data, we've actually, because of our data, we were actually able to come in and show Metronet of the 1,700 towns that they're looking to do throughout the United States and their 19, 19 states that they do business in, all of which are 50,000 to 75,000 sweet spots, which none of our communities even math up together make that type of thing. Uh, we've been able to come in and show them the fact of our take rates. And so when they were doing their ROI is initially on the builds, they're like, we can't make this work. And I'm like, yes, you can. Yes, you can. We're going to run the numbers with you. So we sat down and we ran the numbers with them and said, right now you can see it from what we've got, that we're doing 80 and 90% take rates. The industry standard's 30 to 40. So I said, take your numbers and you can double them for what you got, because you're going to get that ROI back. And so we've been able to do that and that's actually what helped us sell that two and a half million for a $14 million project.
You can just tell by the, we're really starved for fiber optic when you have a take rate of 90%. Uh, my, one other, uh, question, I guess it'd be for Mr. Metz. I'm sure he's reading briefs from something else. Was there a conflict for me? We voted on this for a long time. Uh, now we're getting to the nitty gritty where I'm actually going to be hooked up up in northwest, uh, Hollywood.
Thanks a lot. Rub it in.
Is it, uh, is it a conflict for you to, to support this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I don't, I don't think so on this one. I mean, this is just the public, you know, expenditure for you and I don't, I don't see any conflict for you to vote on this.
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
Mr. Chair, just some comments.
I think that sometimes things get lost in this and I just wanted to recognize that we're building on something that was set up years and years ago, before I joined the board, et cetera. Like if that, if those building blocks weren't there, we wouldn't be able to even get close to this. I also think, um, I've shared it a bazillion times, one of my favorite books is The Speed of Trust. Without you building those trust relationships, we wouldn't be here either. And I like the updates, but I'm not on the phone every week. Where are we at? Where are we at? Where are we at? Because we, we trust you. I also call out to Matt R., who does a lot of the work behind the scenes and the maps. There, there's so much detail into that stuff that makes us valuable. I didn't want that to get lost. Um, I also didn't want to get it lost who we're serving and why we're serving. Um, and I just wanted to share a story. There was a lady that approached me and she says, you're the broadband guy. And I said, no, that's Randy. We were at some meeting together, apparently she was in the audience, didn't know her, was outside a district. And she said, I, I wanted to share my story because I was at a meeting and I was a skeptic. I was the, I don't want this drug across our county. And she said, now my, uh, it was a mom and her, her parents are, are in a, in a bad met, uh, state from a, from a physical standpoint. She said, I just want to tell you what it's meant for us to be connected to broadband. And she said, the first thing is, is, is my mom and dad, her grandparents get to connect with their grandkids, right? They have a broadband connection that's reliable and they can connect wherever they're at. That gives them lift and quality of life. Um, they said it saved them visits to the VA and other medical facilities because they can do some of the stuff online and telehealth and you can look up here on the screen, which they weren't able to do before. They said, my parents are moving into an assisted facility and from a resale standpoint, somebody coming to our home, they're asking, is, does it have fiber or doesn't, particularly in the rural community. And they said the equity piece of that, that they didn't have to pay taxes on because it's not assessed within it, but they, they realized a significant gain when they're going to go sell, sell their house. Um, and then they said, uh, apparently mom and dad are working professionals and, uh, it was either a sick day or like an in-service day, I can't remember which it was, but the grandparents said, we'll take the kids for the day. And so the kids could do their schoolwork, they could get access to Netflix or YouTube or whatever it was. And I'm not even touching on the building this and putting this in the ground and what it means for future development and the fact that we have this stuff stubbed in that developers, whether it's houses, whether it's, uh, commercial, whether it's industrial, these are big things. And I didn't want the moment to pass that this is why we're doing it. Not to get to a number that we can, you know, put, put up on a slide that says we got to 100%. Also wanted to cover off on what, what the goal never was. The goal never was to serve the cities that already had competition. It was 100% focused on the areas where there's no way, there's no way that fiber would ever go unless we helped subsidize. So historic investments in that, of course, the ARPA dollars helped us get there. And then I'll call this out, if there are minimal gaps to be had out there. Um, years ago, we led the charge with, uh, wifi pucks in the library. So if there's gaps anywhere, you can go to your local library and check out a wifi puck at no cost to you and plug those gaps while you're waiting for your fiber. And I specifically, particularly call that out because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to run fiber if we're going to rip up a road and have to redo it. Those are the gaps that if somebody wants to throw out a gotcha, the gotcha would be is, yeah, it's practical that we're not going to connect it to reconnect it and incur the cost, but there's an answer. It's, the wifi pucks are an answer for people to be there. So impressive and impactful. Um, I've shared this before. I, I think that this is huge and exciting and we should take full advantage of it, not just to elevate what you've done in the project or our community or the future of our community, but the state of Minnesota too. And so I've asked that we figure out, uh, a symbolic groundbreaking. Uh, ideally it would be some farm in the city that we are connecting up on that specific day.
I wonder where that could possibly be.
I would, I would suggest Audubon and Lyman would be a great place to focus our energies. But, um, but, but I mean this because, um, is I have these conversations and you talk about the first county in the state. Yes, there's the counties that have less than 5,000 population, it's super easy to get those connected. We're talking about the, the only major county with 10,000 or more population to be able to do this. This is something our governors wanted to do. It's something our US senators wanted to do. It's something Mary Maguire, who was the president of NACO, said this is, this isn't just local back of the yard, hey, tell your neighbor at the fish fry that we did this. This is national, international based stuff. And I'll point out, there were $72 billion of federal dollars on the table for this initiative and we didn't use a single dollar of it because it wasn't cost advantage for us. We did it anyway. And so I think it's worth elevating this story and inviting the media, not just our local media, which we'd love to have, but the local, because we as a state can take this win and pump the economic development that it means in the future and all the things that we're trying to do. And so I applaud your efforts and your team's efforts and I'd like staff to maybe late November, early December to plan that groundbreaking and invite everybody, um, to be part of this big event. So thank you for what you do.
Any, any other comments? I will vote for this when it comes up, but I just want to make a comment that it was about three and a half years ago that they came out and dug the trench through the driveway, put the cable on each side of the driveway and those cable ends are still laying there because, um, it's still not hooked up. So whatever you can do to expedite this, I appreciate that. Now, uh, all in, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Randy, for all you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
With that, it brings us to item 7.1, to create a 1.0 law enforcement responder, crisis therapist and eliminate a deputy sheriff. And with that, we'll call up our Sheriff, Mr. Jason Cameron. Welcome, Jason.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for, for your time this morning. And, and I do want to talk a little bit about, uh, the idea to create a, another, uh, law enforcement co-responder by converting the funding that we use for a deputy sheriff to fund the co-responder. And, and the short version of, of that is that I think given the mental health calls and the types of calls that we're going to, I think if we talk to the deputies and certainly my command staff, they will tell you that the value that the co-respond, co-responder brings exceeds what having an additional deputy would do for them in the field. Um, but some, I, I just want to talk just briefly about calls for service. And, you know, you can see here that over the last 10 years, we've had kind of a, a, an upward trend, um, in mental health calls for service. We're doing roughly 450 to 500 calls, uh, for service annually. Only a third of those meet the threshold for, uh, uh, mental health transport. So what that means is absent a co-responder or a response by a crisis therapist, two thirds of the people who are in crisis and call, uh, do not receive a, a mental health professional. They get a cop, right? And, uh, um, that's pretty troubling to me that we're not getting the right resource to the people, uh, when they actually need it. And then also we look in our jail about nearly a third of our, uh, bookings, a quarter of our bookings require mental health services once they're in the facility. And so that's a pretty substantial number of, of people. Fortunately, our inmate population is pretty low, but, but if a third of them or 25% of them, uh, require mental health services, that's a pretty big ask, um, uh, uh, on our facility. And the co-responder helps with some of that. And when we look, I, I had, uh, HHS provide some data to us as well. And you can see that over the last few years, they've seen a, an upward trend as well, not to the same degree that we have. Um, but you can tell that it's there. And it's about a 50/50 split between men and women. Uh, in, in, in our side of the house, we're seeing a lot more juveniles than, um, adults, but, uh, uh, the, the gender split is about 50/50. So when we start, when, when I start looking at, you know, adding a co-responder, you know, part of what drives that is how do we decide, you know, the scheduling of the things? We want to look at when do the calls come in? And, you know, there's, when we look at scheduling, there's how much work is there, but also when does the work come in? And so, you know, there's 168 hours in a week and out of a typical employee because of vacation, you know, they're scheduled for 40, but vacation and training and licensing maintenance and FMLA, you really get on average about 32 hours of work where they're in the workplace. And of that, you know that a portion of that is administrative where they're, they're attending the, uh, sex harassment training, they're reading their emails, they're getting up to speed on, on all of those things. So, so when you see a 40 hour a week employee, it's important to keep in mind that the actual work you get doing them, the, the job is less. Well, anyways, we map out the hours of, of day. And what you can see here is it starts at 1:00 AM on the left and goes to midnight. And so it's, and, and this is just our mental health calls for service when they come in. And so the sweet spot for staffing this is to start around eight or nine in the morning. And if you can wrap up around 11 or midnight, that's kind of about the, the time you want to cover. Well, uh, obviously that's greater than eight hours, so it takes more than one person to do that. So then the next thing we look at is we're going, okay, what time of day do they come in or which day of the week do they come in? Well, it's pretty flat. They come in all day, every day of the week. That's, that's what we see. And, um, uh, Health and Human Services provided the same data. This is sheriff's office only, uh, but I, they provided all of their data and if I mapped it out, it looks exactly like this. The time of day that they come in, the day of the week, all of that, it's, it's the The time of day that they come in, the day of the week, all of that, it's, it's the same. And so a, as we look at how the work is distributed. I, I simply need more than one person to catch the bulk of that based on how the work is distributed. You know, we, we looked at it and said, okay, they're, they're doing over one a day. And that's, well, that's really not that much, but it's when they're coming in i- is when they hit it. And you know, the co-responders, while they have the, the one call a day that they go to, they also circle back. When the deputies went on Monday night, because the co-responder was off, the co-responder circles back on Tuesday. You know, provides some of those services and routes them to things. And I, you know, some, just some simple anecdotes, and these are not just handpicked sorts of things. These are pretty indicative of what we see. We've got a 71 year old female in Waconia who is insistent that the cops leave. That, you know, and you've, you've probably read in the newspaper that the uniform presence, the law enforcement presence. Drives up the anxiety and makes the problem worse. And, and that is largely true. I mean, there's a, you know, it's not always the case, but in this case, it certainly was. Well, as soon as the co-responder shows up, um, there's an immediate calming. And you know, by the end of this, you know, we get her calmed down and she didn't need to go on transport. And ultimately she wants to hug everybody, uniformed cops and all on the way, just thanking them for coming and helping her sort this out. And then we have a, you know, another example, and this is again, the kinds of things that present themselves quite often is 23 year old. A male in Chaska, he's experiencing some mental health issues. And he's getting pushed back from his insurance company about where he can go to receive services. And so they finally agree, he can go to company X and he can get an appointment three weeks from then. Well, when you're in crisis, you can't wait three weeks to, to get in and get some help. And so the, uh, first, uh, the co-responder gets there and connected with resources without waiting through First Street Center's rapid response. And that was just, she knew which resources were out there and she were able to connect this guy to bridge the gap between today. And when he could get in to actually, you know, see his therapist and whatnot. Uh, you know, we've had them respond to some pretty high profile incidents. We had, uh, you know, an incident just a couple of weeks ago on highway 212 involving, involving South Lake. Now that was done telephonically with a therapist, but the point is, is getting that resource on scene right away. Was by telephone in this case, but it was very beneficial. And then we had, uh, barricaded, uh, suicidal person in a home in, in Chanhassen. Who, again, you know, it's telephonic, but she's on scene and she's talking, trying to talk him down. And you know, there's varied levels of success, but it's just really helpful. And then of course, we've had many instances where the call was something other than mental health. But the cops get there and they figure out there's a major mental health component to this. And so think about a parent who finds their teenage son committed suicide. That's a death investigation with a, uh, mental health component to it. And so the, the co-responder comes to those sorts of calls as well. And, and so I, I, I say all this to say that I, I think how the work is distributed. And the successes that we're having with the program. I really feel like this is a good reutilization of some funding from the deputy resource to a mental health provider. I think we're getting a, a, a great deal of value from that. I had some conversation with Heather Goodwin from Health and Human Services. About, you know, because the way it's structured, if you recall, they provide, uh, clinical supervision. And the sheriff's office management provides employment supervision. And Heather assures me that they have the capacity to assume that additional clinical supervision. We talked about, she's got head, uh, crisis therapist vacancies. You know, are we essentially competing with each other for the same pool of candidates? And, and I think we've concluded that the people who want to do, uh, hospital visit crisis therapist. And people who want to do in the field crisis therapist are two different pools of people. So we don't think we're conflicting with each other. And I think, uh, it, all, everybody who's been involved in it thinks it's totally worthwhile to, um, invest. Uh, a little bit more, um, funding into this. And just to, you know, circle back on the history, we started this in 2019. It was the original defund law enforcement. We didn't defund anything. We just reallocated resources to something that was a little bit more, uh, important.
Sheriff, now that you see it on screen, maybe some people aren't familiar. What does co-responder really mean?
Yeah, the, the, thank you, Commissioner. Um, that is a, a great question. And the, this is a, a crisis therapist who is fully embedded with the sheriff's office. And she's, she's officed in our office. She is, um, you know, drives one of our cars, has one of our police radios. And she goes to the calls with the deputy sheriff. The deputy sheriff goes in, makes sure that the scene is reasonably safe. Then she can come in and do assessments and have some dialogue and.
Not considered a deputy at all?
Nope, no, she's not a, she's a licensed social worker. And, uh, but, so thank you for that. And, and you, you know, I, in addition to thinking that this is a, uh, uh, you know, public safety priority and a good move. I, I feel like I have to remind the board or suggest to the board that, um, you know, in 2026 and beyond, I think we're going to have to, uh, continue to invest in this. And I can't keep converting deputies to, I mean, I have to have cops to, to be effective in this role as well. And, uh, and so we will be looking for additional FTE funding going forward to support this. In part because of what I demonstrated earlier about the distribution of the work. Which is driving this more so than the volume of, of work. And there's plenty of volume as well. So it's levy neutral. I think we, but the, the, the RBA outlines that it's a straight up conversion levy neutral. And so with that, I would, uh, uh, respond to any questions that you might have.
My first was question sheriff is, do you foresee any time in the future where there would be a dedicated, uh, path? To get this type of, uh, training that you could be both a deputy and a therapist?
Uh, excellent question. And, um, I think that that is a, a big lift. Because the, the Minskew group is looking for licensure on therapists. It is, it's, it's my estimation that I, I think it could be done, but we would have to get, uh, Minskew to agree. That you could basically create a mental health paramedic, right? If you, if you use that analogy. In the old days, there were no paramedics. There were ambulance drivers and they would load the patient into the ambulance and whistle them to the hospital to the emergency room doctor. Well, at some point, the emergency room doctors said, you know, if we were to train these ambulance drivers to do these certain things in the field. Prior to transport, we could save some lives. And thus was born the paramedic. And, uh, I think you could do something very similar to create a mental health paramedic, uh, if you will. And, um, but I, you know, that's a licensing sort of thing and figuring out which is the core curriculum. It's a pretty big lift, but is it doable? I think so.
It's down the road and maybe that's something the sheriff's, uh, association can, uh, work on in the future.
Yeah, I, I sure hope to someday.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Ruderman?
Uh, so I don't, look at you and I don't see a guy that's fluffy. I see a department that's not fluffy. And so sometimes when we hear mental health, people think of it that way. And so the fact that you're endorsing this and supporting this, and you said investment many times, not expense. Uh, I thank you for your efforts. I always ask the question, who does it best? I think we are one of the counties that do it best. And I applaud your leadership and partnership with Heather and others. Couple of questions. One, if we had unlimited resources and, and, um, unlimited plentiful candidates, which we know isn't the case. How many would be the optimal number that we would seek to do as we grow as a county? Is it two? Is it five? Is it one?
Great, great question. You, you know, in, if I were, uh, king for a day and money weren't an issue. Uh, I would like to have scheduled 24 seven coverage. But when you look at the time of day that they come in, where that valley is, uh, I would be content to just have scheduled 16 hours a day. Which depending upon collective bargaining agreements and accoula rates and all that is roughly for FTE.
Okay.
For a co-response.
Do you see?
You're asking for?
I'm only looking to convert one today. Thank you for clarifying.
So 2019, the first one, you're doubling the number today. Optimal is four, that's something we can shoot for when we're thinking about budget as well. Is there a path for this role to be non-licensed? And I only ask not to, not to demean all the stuff that you have to do to train for it. But we simply don't have plentiful candidates in this space, whether it's an HHS role, whether it's out in the field and, and a co-responder type way. Is there discussions of saying you don't need the full blown degree, but you are qualified to go out in the field in a non-licensed way?
You know, that's really, uh, not something I am fully dialed in on, on what the requirements are. I think if we talk to, uh, Health and Human Services, Heather could probably provide a little bit more insight. I don't want to put her on the spot, but I think she could provide a little bit more insight about what the licensing requirements are. My recollection is it has to do largely with being able to operate, um, unsupervised in the field.
Okay.
And the licensure allows them the more freedoms to do that.
Last question I had, um, every year I get a chance to do a ride along and try and do it with your team, uh, try and do it with Chaska PD. And, um, and I just wanted to again elevate the checkup from the neck up. That was one of the points of conversation. I was anticipating maybe a hesitance. This individual said a hundred percent of the staff loves it. Now that's just anecdotal. I don't know if there was a survey that says it, but a hundred percent love it. And then that was also shared as the ripple effects. Other agencies trying to do the same thing modeled after us. And the mention of, uh, that being a piece of retention and attraction, that you care about your staff enough to do that. Also being in the car, we had the chance, it was the middle of the day when I normally go at night to where they're, per the action, right? Where the action is, but I did it, I did this one during the day. And we went to a fire alarm. It was just a fire alarm that was beeping. It was a dead battery or something. And up showed two fire trucks, uh, a, a, a follow fire car. Our deputy was there, uh, I think Ridgeview was rolling, but they called them off. It seems like a lot of resource for a single call. And it feels like in the spirit of how do you push that resource in different areas? Is there anything happening that we should be aware of or that's a movement to? When it's a fire alarm that's deemed pretty quickly, it's a nine volt battery. Do we really need to run three fire trucks, us and, and, and Ridgeview?
Well, uh, no, that's a.
That's a lot of question.
No, that's a, that's a terrific question and it's, it's a fair thing to ask. And, um, you know, we generally take the position that when we're going to error, we error on the side of caution. And so it is a fire alarm and it is an incident until you get there and find out it's not. And so that's why you see, uh, a fair number of resources going. In, we're, in the, we'll take you back in the, uh, you know, 20 years ago. The fire trucks wouldn't have gotten there. The deputies would typically get there first and go, all right, there's no smoke, there's no fire, it's a dead battery. Uh, and then they just radio back and cancel. But because of the volume of calls and the time of day and the inability to staff fire departments with paid on call volunteers. Many fire departments have gone to, uh, I think they call them duty crews where they have scheduled hours. And they did the same thing we did here. They mapped out when are their peak times of calls? And they staff it during those peaks. Uh, and, and they did that for their own attraction and retention part, because they were losing firefighters. If you have to walk away from a hot meal, seven nights a week to go to a false alarm, it grows tiresome. So they started to staff those duty crews. Well, what that also did was that put those resources rolling and they get there about the same time as the deputies a lot of times. And so we didn't get the opportunity to, to cancel them. And, uh, you, you know, those are, uh, whether or not they get sent is up to the municipalities to determine whether or not they want to respond. Now to dovetail into that though, we are doing our part on the dispatch end, because all the calls come through us. Uh, we have purchased some software that the dispatchers use. And it's a, uh, you know, they ask the question and depending upon what the answer to the question is, it takes them to the next decision making matrix. Uh, decision making matrix. And they work their way through, and then that tells them which resources to, uh, dispatch to the, to the unit. And we're doing that in part because we want to try to help the municipalities be as efficient as they can. Because they don't want to run an all call to every dead battery in a small car.
Yep, cool, thank you.
Just a little bit of piggyback on that, uh, kind of reminder to everybody that if you got a burning permit. Whether it be through the townships or if it's through the city. Uh, make sure you follow the directions and call it in not only to your local fire marshal, fire chief. But call it into the, the, the dispatch center, non-emergency dispatch center. So when the neighbor sees a fire and they think you got a big issue, but they can call it in. And the dispatch says, no, we have a burning permit at that address, so don't be alarmed. So make sure you follow the directions. Commissioner Workman?
Well, my burning permit is for today. So I'll let everybody know today, I'm going to be burning today. Um, uh, and so I don't want to get too, too far off, too far, too far off here. But, and, and Jason does a great job of, uh, of being diplomatic, I guess. There's, there is a, a fairly now long-term, uh, spat about who should be. Where, who should be getting the calls, right? Who should be on the radio? Who should be between law enforcement and fire departments? And why are we sending a brigade, uh, out, uh, for a false alarm? Or just about anything when maybe they're not needed? And so isn't there sort of that debate going about, uh, trying to differentiate between what, what is necessary? And what isn't?
Sure. And those are, uh, those are regular conversations that we have with our municipal partners. You know, we are essentially the, uh, uh, police department in every city but for Chaska. And, and so our, in Chanhassen, for example, Lieutenant Lance Pierce oversees the policing mission there. And so when they talk about who should go to the medicals, uh, and should it be fire service or law enforcement? Or do we find a hybrid in there? They're having those conversations. I think some of the cities are looking for a, uh, higher level of service, um, than they perceive they get from law enforcement. And our focus is, we have potential to be on a, uh, law enforcement call when a medical comes in. And so we want to strike the balance to make sure that resources do in fact get sent there if law enforcement's tied up on, on something else.
Mr. Chair, move approval for seven out one to convert, um, uh, the staff to a co-responder and, and effectively double our, uh, co-responder crisis therapist.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ruderman, second by Commissioner Workman. Uh, any discussion? Commissioner Lynch?
No, only I just want to compliment, uh, the, the sheriff. He kind of downplayed the, um, you know, he said, you need a mental health therapist and a cop shows up. I've had several conversations with people over the years and, uh, the sheriff's deputies are unbelievably, unbelievably good. Uh, they're cross-trained and they're trained in de-escalation. Not only that, but you're around a co-responder so they can have a watercooler talk about, um, how do you do it in this situation? The cops are, are absolutely wonderful. And they're, they need real, what they need more than anything are, are understanding spouses too. Because after you respond to a 71 year old person who wants to give you a hug and you show up at home and say, no, honey, that's from a 71 year old who wanted to give you a hug after. Oh, sure it is, sure it is. So my compliments to you, uh, you've got a wonderful staff. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Sounds like you've tried that at home once, so.
No, no, that's from a 71 year old woman who wanted to hug everyone. Sure it is.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Keep up the good work. That brings us to 7.2, the Veterans Treatment Court Reorganization. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience. Uh, Mr. Eric Johnson, he's our probation and court service director. Welcome, Eric.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. First of all, before I start, I just want to thank you all for your continued support of our treatment courts here in, in Carver County as well as Administrator Hemsey. You've all been very supportive of both vets court and drug court, uh, as we've, as we've been going, uh, through the years in those, those courts. So I know that you've been briefed a bit on this, this, uh, agenda item, but I, if you'll indulge me for about five minutes.
Take as much time, we're slow learners sometimes.
It might be six minutes or seven minutes. I don't, I'm low tech, I don't need a keyboard, I'm not going to talk about cookies or anything like that, so. 2015, we started vets court here in Carver County. Some of you may remember, although I don't want the county attorney's head to swell, it was Mark Metz's idea. Uh, to bring vets court here to Carver County. So started in 2015, we started very small. Uh, if some of you may recall Jill Arbiter, she was our probation officer at the time. She did both coordination and supervision. And we had, you know, a small number of, of folks in our, in our vets court. But, uh, we did start back in 2015. We had no outside money. It was all in kind. It was all just a bunch of county employees that wanted to serve our veterans in the justice system to the best of our ability. So we plugged, plugged away for a couple of years without any state funding. And eventually, uh, we received a very small amount of funding, probably around 2017, uh, from the state. I think it was $7,000. About all it did was train some people, uh, and then the money was gone. So it was all kind of in kind at that point. Now eventually the state included us, uh, in their, uh, what they call their judicial council, uh, treatment court allocation. Uh, we didn't ask for any money at the time, but they did say, hey, if you want to be included in our state formula, you can be. Just basically give us an email and give us your interest. And we did. So we ended up getting $89,000, I think was the fully, uh, funding portion of our, uh, vets court, uh, funding. So we plugged away, uh, for a couple of years. We struggled with numbers. Uh, I, if, if any of you commissioners ask me why we struggle with numbers in our, in our vets court, I don't have an answer for you. I like to think that it's a positive thing that, that our vets here in Carver County are well adjusted enough that they don't enter our justice system. So, uh, we typically, uh, for those first couple of years, we really struggled for numbers. As a matter of fact, uh, the state allocation is based on a three-year census average. And I believe one year we got cut because we didn't, uh, meet that, uh, that average. So we got our, our funding cut in half, which was a very lean year. Uh, so we continued to plug along, plug along, try to find enough, uh, veterans to be in our, in our program. And along came Dakota County. As you know, currently. currently we're, we're merged with Dakota County. Dakota County had a very vibrant, uh, justice, uh, system services for their veterans, but what they didn't have is they didn't have a judge. They didn't have a court. Uh, so it was a really good match, uh, aside for some, some arguments about some things, but it was a good match because we needed their participants to sustain our funding and they needed our court. So, uh, we did that for the, the better part of the last three or four years, uh, which brings us to today. Um, about several months ago, uh, it was mainly judges who had conversations. Uh, judges from Carver, Scott, and Dakota all had conversations about the possibility of having a first judicial district vets court. Uh, and again, it was all conversations with judges, um, and we all love judges, but what judges sometimes forget is that there's a lot of things that go behind the scenes when you have to do these types of programs. So there was many months of, of, uh, of meetings. Uh, Mr. Metz knows this. Uh, they weren't always, uh, there were some arguments, there were some differences of opinions, and there was a lot of splintered conversations that frankly made things probably more confusing. But, uh, there was a lot of meetings, uh, and there finally was a proposal to, uh, have a first judicial district court. We're going to start with Carver, Scott, and Dakota. We're going to have, uh, an east end of the vets court and a west end. The east end would occur in Apple Valley and Dakota County would essentially run that. And we're going to have a west, west end that would occur in Shakopee. Uh, and that would be the, the Scott and Carver kind of, uh, portion of that. So that was the proposal. As a matter of fact, very recently Judge Janet Kane in Carver County, along with Heidi Castama, who is an employee of Scott County Community Corrections, uh, just got that approved, uh, through the state judicial council so that we can be our own legit first judicial district vets court. And there's a, a tentative kickoff, uh, for May 6th to begin that court. So amidst all these, and this is where Molly Brunner comes, comes in. Molly Brunner is the Director of Community Corrections in Scott County. Uh, Scott and Carver, as you know, we've always had great relationships. Uh, their, their numbers are quite a bit bigger, a lot bigger than ours at this point. Um, but Ms. Brunner, uh, suggested, uh, very smartly that since the, the west end of the vets court is going to be located in Shakopee and Scott County is going to have most, most, the majority of the participants in the program. Uh, they're typically, per day, are going to have 12 to 15. Carver's up right now. I think we're up to six right now. That almost never happens. We're typically going to be at three or to four. So we figured that if they're going to have most of the participants, going to be located in Shakopee, uh, Ms. Brunner also, uh, suggested that they take over the probation supervision for not only their participants in Scott County, but also ours, both court services and Department of Corrections, the felony, uh, felony participants. So, I kind of, I joked with, with Molly, I kind of looked at her and said, why, why would I say no to this? Uh, if you want to take all this stuff over. And we can still serve our veterans in Carver County just as well as we did before. But it does make logistical, uh, and consistency sense, uh, because then we only have one probation officer, one coordinator for all of our, our west end, uh, folks. Right now with Dakota, Scott, or Carver and Dakota, we could have as many as six probation officers on a, uh, in, in, on different cases. So what happens there is sometimes you have different philosophies and it can lead to , uh, all sorts of problems. So, uh, it made sense logistically and for consistency's sake to, uh, have this coordinator be housed, uh, and also have Scott County be the fiscal agent of the grant, which is now up to 100,000 because of some opioid settlement money that was thrown into the pot. So, uh, which, this leads us to, and I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to ask me some questions, but, uh, this leads us to what the, the board agenda item is today, is to eliminate our point eight, uh, veterans court position. Uh, Scott County has since hired all the personnel that's needed for this particular program, this west end of the program. Uh, and I may add that the, it, we are two different, uh, courts, but we're the same court because we'll operate under the same policies and procedures, uh, with Dakota County and as well as Carver and Scott. Now, the vision eventually is that if the other four counties want to enter this, uh, essentially consortium, they certainly can. And all they have to do is ask and, and, and tell us what they need. So, uh, that's kind of where we get today. I thank you for letting me do that quick recap. I thought it was necessary for all of you to be reminded of what kind of the stages our vets court has gone through. So I'll leave it over, open to questions.
Okay. Before I ask for any questions, I was going to turn to our county attorney, Mr. Metz. Do you have anything to add to, I mean, obviously you're the one that helped start the whole, uh, veterans court. Uh, do you have anything to add as far as this rearrangement now?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Board Chair and Commissioners. I'm in fully, full support of this and it's been quite a journey to get the different leaders to agree upon this. And it really is an example of great collaboration where we ended up. Because our goal, all of our goals is to make sure that every veteran that's in our criminal justice system has the opportunity to be served in the first judicial district. And so like Eric indicated, if you have somebody in McLeod County or LeSueur County or elsewhere, they should have the opportunity too. So hopefully others will join us. But this makes good sense since we're, our numbers are so low. And the reality of it is that we were going to lose funding because we just didn't have the numbers. And that's not, they're just, we've, we've represented the veterans in the last 10 years who've committed offenses and now it's just been reduced. So, so it just made really good sense for us. We had a thriving program, but to collaborate and to transfer this i- is, is going to be really beneficial to us. And we're not going to have to come to the board to sustain this program, asking for 50, $100,000 in the future from you. Uh, but it's going to continue to serve our veterans just as well. Logistically, it was really challenging. Where are we going to have these courts? What days are they going to occur? Our prosecutors have to travel, you know, probation has to tra, things like that, but it's really worked out and it's a credit to, you know, again, the collaboration between Dakota, Scott, and Carver County and our judges and sitting down for multiple meetings and having some disagreement, but we, but that's just to get to the end result. You're going to have different opinions about how it should work.
I just wanted to make sure that you were fully on board.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I'll, before I ask for other questions, you mentioned how east and west end, sometimes in more different probation officers, you sometimes have different philosophies that are different. Uh, do you, uh, Scott County's late to the game and now are, are, are we aligned with our philosophy with Scott County?
We are. And, and I'll, I'll, if I can, if I can, Mr. Chair, I'll steal the term from, uh, Commissioner Udoman. Um, when I talk about different philosophies, you know, we, we, the age-old probation officer was kind of, we call them a tail them, nail them, and jail them. That if they, if they do something wrong, you just, you, you gotta go harsh, you gotta go harsh. Um, one, one thing I want to say, and, and this relates to why, why we're in alignment here, uh, with, uh, Scott County is that treatment courts are not fluffy. And I'll steal that term. They're not. There's, they're a lot of work. I oftentimes look, look, look at some of the, the things that these participants are asked to do, um, and wonder if I might just do the jail time myself because it's so much work. Um, so it's, they're not fluffy. We do, our, our, our philosophies are aligned because this is a, a program where we know that these folks are going to fail a few times. So we need to, it doesn't mean we don't consequence them for it. We certainly do. And that's, when we talk about it's not fluffy, it's not. If, if, if we need to consequence them and, and put them in jail for a short amount of time, we can do that. Uh, but the, the philosophy is that we're going to keep going. And I, I, I have a hard time not telling the truth. I'm going to tell you that treatment courts for us are a lot of work as well. Um, because, and, and it does take some resources. But when we talk about, I think the, the sheriff had some, some anecdotes. When we talk about anecdotes, these are some of the best stories we hear of success. Because these, some of these people have been in these programs for two, three years and they just struggle at first. And then all of a sudden they're sober and there's vets that their, their mental health has improved. And the successes you see are, are, you can't ignore them. But it does take some work. And this took work for all, like as Mr. Metz said, all these people and judges and attorneys and probation directors getting in a room saying, hey, let's do it this way, wasn't easy. But I, I, I do believe that this is the best way we can sustain. And I'll be, I'll be honest, I'm a little greedy here. I want to sustain that state funding, uh, for as long as we possibly can. So in order to do that, we needed to do, first of all, the Carver-Dakota thing. But now I believe we need to do this, uh, first judicial district. And I think it's a good idea and hopefully it'll be a good idea for Cloud, Sibley, LeSueur, and the rest of the county, so.
I'm happy it was mentioned by Mr. Metz that, uh, years ago when this was first set up, that was our worry or concern that we got state funding or federal funding to set this up. But when that grant runs out, how are we going to sustain this in the future? And now with the collaboration with Dakota County and now Scott coming on board, uh, it is a large enough group that we can keep this program going. A very, a good program. Other questions by the board? Commissioner Lynch?
I don't necessarily have a, a question. I would like, I thank you for asking it, County Attorney Metz, uh, for this. And I think it's wonderful. And, uh, here in Carver County, we love our veterans very, very much. And if we're going to lose funding, I think that's a way, a possible way that some, maybe a one could fall through the cracks. By continuing forward with this, we have the coverage full, full forward. And if it's three, that's wonderful. Because we have a lot more than three veterans in, just because they don't need this, I just want to make sure that it's there and no one falls through the cracks. So.
Good comment. Other questions?
I commented a question. I always start from the, start the, from the filter of what's best for the customer client and what's best for the taxpayer. And I think that you guys used that lens to arrive here. And, uh, and then the second thing is the question is sometimes, um, because of that, there's, there's a change of roles or people are coming and going. And my understanding, and perhaps you can affirm, is, uh, people that have served in these roles that, 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 um, might have to find a different opportunity. They have a high-demand skillset and we've done everything we can to find a place for them. Is that, is that accurate?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Udoman, very accurate. Yes.
Thank you.
Other final thoughts? If not, they're looking for a motion to approve the elimination of a point eight FTE court coordinator, veterans, uh, effective at the close of business on April 26, 2024.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Eric. With that, it brings us to our county administrators' report. Mr. Hemsey?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're going to adjourn our regular meeting and then get an update, uh, on the CDA workplace.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman, second by Commissioner Lynch to adjourn. There is no discussion on that motion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.